Good evening. I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the December 17, 2019 School Board Meeting to order. Whether you're in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased you took the time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the Board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Ms. McDougal.
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich.
Present.
Mrs. Campbell.
Present.
And Mr. Susan.
Present.
The Board will now hold a moment of silent reflection and invite you to join us. Thank you. Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow Board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Ms. Campbell, would you like to start us off this evening?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Belford. So, it's whenever it's just preparing all of you, it's going to be a long one because whenever it's been a month since a board meeting, we all have lots to share. So, I'm going to try to keep it short to some highlights. A few weeks ago, I was at Central when the group Tied Together came, and I know they've been to several of our schools. They've actually, in the last year, been to all of the middle schools in the county. And that's a group of men who come in and they just want to provide a moment, a snapshot of just some mentoring, things that are, that are young men, you know, teaching them how to tie a tie, how to look someone in the eye and shake them, shake their hand, and how to be a man, just, you know, a brief time they spend together. And so, that was really awesome to see our community leaders. We had between thirty, forty, maybe up to fifty men from our community. But I will tell you, that has sparked some conversation about our young ladies. And I do not want to ever take anything away from what Tied Together is doing for our young men, and I think they understand, though, that, but it sparked something in our community. Teachers from a couple of our schools have said, hey, what can we do for our young ladies? I've talked to a couple heard that floating around, and so, I'm excited to see what they're going to do. I put a little word out, I think it would be good, because it's different, you know, we're different, and we have different challenges of maybe a little how to be confident without the conflict. So, if that's the choice, I copyright that right now. But I'm excited to see our community come in and want to partner and encourage our young men and women to be responsible adults as they move forward. So, really thankful for that organization and those men who are participating. Also, last week, Mel High had their second annual, I believe it's going to be an annual event, Human Trafficking Awareness Event. They had an orange out for their campus, and they invited some special guest speakers. Sheriff Wayne Ivey came and really shared some scary statistics with our students about human trafficking and what it looks like even in our own county when we think it's not happening here, and it is. Happens all over Florida, and Brevard is not unaffected. And then, they again had a special guest speaker, Rainey, from Bikers Against Trafficking, who came and shared her personal testimony of how she went, she was trafficked as a young person and how she got out of it. And it was very powerful, and it was exciting to see. They held it in the gym this year, so we had a larger turnout, and the students were such a good audience and received our, the feedback from them so well. I have been to a lot of concerts in the last few weeks, mostly as a parent, but I'm telling you, music is alive and thriving still in Brevard County, and I love every minute of it. Our teachers do such a good job coaching our students to some fabulous performances through this holiday season, and then, coming up in January, we'll have our all-county concerts going on. And we have many, many students across the district going to state in Tampa. All get to go to some of those in January as well. So, congratulations to all our wonderful performers. Oh, one more quick thing I got to spend last Thursday morning, and then yesterday morning, with our awesome team from Food Nutrition Services, serving lunch to the students at Kennedy Space Center. Our sixth graders all get to go there, and I just want to give a shout out to Food Nutrition Services, especially to Ms. Cindy and her interns, who have coordinated about six weeks of lunches, that's four hundred to five hundred lunches every day that they are loading up and fixing, loading up in a truck, taking up to Kennedy Space Center, pulling out in about twenty coolers that we unloaded from a truck, serving the kids so graciously with a smile on their face through all different kinds of weather because it's outside, then loading all those coolers back onto the truck and driving back. So, great job to Food Nutrition Services for the work that they do. Thank you.
Mr. Susan.
Well, first off, I saw a competitor in the crowd there, Mr. Gary Schifrin, and I wanted to say thank you so much for what you've done with the ICO-C and your work. I don't know if we're going to do a huge presentation and thank him, but he has literally been on this and chaired it from the beginning. And you have done an amazing job, or as far as making sure that that ship was going in the right direction and all the things that you've done so far, and I wanted to take a minute. And even though you beat me in the putting competition, I still have the trophy because I refuse to give it up. I actually just took it out of the car yesterday, it's been sitting in there, and I look forward to next year, but I did want to say thank you to that. I wanted to say thank you to the Boys and Girls Club and the HBCA. We fed over two hundred people from the Temple Terrace area in O'Gally. Many of you guys don't know that there are three or four major project areas in the O'Gally corridor, and one of those is the H, or the Temple Terrace area. And for the third straight year, the three of us have gotten together and funded seventeen turkeys along with a bunch of sides. We actually bring out all of the tables and chairs and eat Thanksgiving dinner with all of them on the basketball courts right in front of the projects there, and it's an amazing opportunity. And if anybody knows anything about the Boys and Girls Club that's there, it's well underfunded and over-cared-for and has some amazing stories. So, I wanted to say thank you to Michelle Maslin, the HBCA, and the Boys and Girls Club for what they did there. I wanted to give a big shout out to Sue Han, Sue Han. Big thanks. Got an email saying that there were a couple of doors that had some issues at Longleaf that may not be locking. I sent the email at four o'clock. At six o'clock in the morning, there were men there to change the doors to make sure that our security in our schools is our number-one paramount, and all of that credit goes to Sue Han and her organization. Thank you so much, Sue. Literally got emails from all the teachers that didn't even have a door that just said thank you so much, made them feel really good, along with the security specialist who's very concerned about it. So, thank you so much, Sue. Also, wanted to say thank you to Ms. Belford. You do an amazing job breaking down the legislative committees and always doing a thorough job when we go away to the school board associations and bringing back and unpacking all of it for us. I did want to say thank you for that, because what the other side was is that I have a bit of a tiff for her. I hate collecting stuff at conferences to the point where I will not even carry a bag, and these vendors drive me nuts. They come up to you and they say, hey, here, here, take this, take this, and I refuse all the time. And I will, I will carry a piece of paper with me in my jacket, because I hate carrying anything, right? Well, Misty came in and we were eating, and she said, Matt, you gotta go out there, they're giving away those canisters for your kids. So, I said, okay, well, I don't like doing this, but I'll go out there now. I don't stay at the hotel where the conference is going on, so I couldn't go and take them and put them away in the hotel room. I had to actually carry them, right? Well, as we were getting the canister, she said, well, you need to go by here and get these frozen little things. What were those little beanie things or something? Boo-boo pads, whatever this is. So, here I am, I'm carrying in this, I'm walking in, right, and I have all of this stuff stacked up this high, and I walk in, and the conference has all the tables of all the school board members from across the state of Florida, there's at least three hundred of them sitting in there. And I get about a quarter of the way in, and I drop my first, my first canister on the ground, and the entire place looks at me like I had just robbed all of the tables. So, now, I'm that guy, even though I really wasn't, and then, there was a sort of comments made on my little boo-boo pads that they looked like other things, and I was completely embarrassed for what ended up happening, and it was completely opposite what I did, so I owe you one big one for that, Misty. That is absolutely ridiculous. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
But my kids did enjoy all the canisters and the boo-boo pads. Matthew was applying them this morning to me. They do work very well. And then, I did want to say that the sheriff is officially, his organization is officially close to signing on with the jobs program that we have, so that'll be one more business and municipality that we do. He oversees all the dog shelters. So, now, the sheriff will be taking advantage of the program, the largest, I might say, vocational rehab program in the United States, where we employ kids from all over the county, and he is now going to utilize that program inside of our dog shelters throughout the county. So, that's a big thing, might take about three months to get the MOU through and everything else, but he's excited about it. And then, the last thing is, you see how I built that up? Like, I started slow and I built it up, so it wasn't hiding up the whole time like I normally do. I wear people out at the end of it. So, anyways, drone racing. It's official, okay? We have four major drone races, this, literally this January, February, March, and then, at the end of March, the fourth drone race is actually at the astronaut, oh, no, it's April, and I'll get you guys the dates, is actually at the Astronaut Memorial Foundation, and the winners, they're going to race inside of there. We now have over thirty-one school district, school board members that are interested in coming to check it out possibly next year, but the thing is, is that the winners get to race in the Rocket Garden. So, they're going to be able to race up the rocket ships out there at the Memorial Foundation, which was a dream of mine since we started this whole drone racing like, what, like three years ago. So, it's going to happen. And it just organically came out of O'Gally and some of the other schools, so look for those drone races, and I hope everybody attends, because it's a very special moment. So, with that, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Susan.
Oh, wait, wait. Ms. DeGresta, everybody, did you, did you want to do her?
I would go right ahead.
No, no, no. Misty, Misty, Ms. Chair, it is your purview to introduce the very special individual at the end of the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. Ms. Duskovich.
I want to thank Stacy Preston at Discovery Elementary School. She coordinated JA in a day. Ms. Campbell and I went and taught second grade in Ms. Hewitt's second-grade class, and we had a great day. JA goes in, they take over the whole school, so they had enough volunteers to teach six hundred and forty-eight students financial literacy for the day, and we really did have a good time. You can tell Ms. Campbell is a former elementary school teacher, because she was comfortable sitting crisscross applesauce on the carpet, playing with the kids. We had, we did, we had a really great time, and it was a good opportunity for the students and for us. Just in case you haven't heard enough about the goats, this is the first board meeting we've had since the goats arrived and left by now at Imperial Estates, and I wanted to thank Matt Noli and Jim Ross on Sue Han's team for working hard to coordinate and make that happen. It started off with a, with an idea from three students at Indy Atlantic Elementary School that they, their backfield was overgrown, and Dr. Mullins and I went for a school visit, and they cornered us and gave us a little presentation on how goats could solve their problem. And somehow, that worked its way up the chain and translated to twenty-four goats being delivered to Imperial Estates to eat a retention pond away. And the goats did an excellent job, right, Ms. Han? I saw the pictures, it's all completely cleared, and we all were, well, I think, was I the only one there for the arrival of the goats?
We were the only two.
Oh, well, I had a great time. I snuggled a baby goat for an hour before it went on its feeding binge, and I'm just, I'm thankful, I'm thankful that we listened to the students, that we thought out of the box, were able to run with the idea, and that it was a success. So, thank you to Ms. Han, to Jim Ross, and Matt Noli for that. And last but not least, this is a little unusual, we have impact pins that we give out to those in the districts that have made a significant impact this year, and I was going to deliver one tomorrow to a school. Usually, we go into the school and present them in front of their team and their staff, but I just found out that tomorrow is going to be her last day. I was going to go on Friday, but tomorrow's her last day, and she's here tonight. So, I'm going to take this opportunity to call her up here, and I'm going to present her with an impact pin for Ms. Cindy Whalen. She is retiring, and again, tomorrow is her last day. She has brought Port Malabar Elementary School from a C to a B, but what's more impressive than that, she had absolutely, she had gains, and she had zero underperforming groups in her school, which means every single group in her school is learning, all of her students, and she's, she works hard. And I was back there asking her about her last day just before the meeting, and all she could talk about was her math gains and her math scores and how she thinks they're going to succeed. I'm like, you're leaving tomorrow, and she's still so worried that all of her students are going to perform. So, I'm going to come down there and present you with the impact pin on your way out.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. You're welcome. Thank you. Ms. McDougal.
Thank you. I'm going to follow on that, because I, too, have some impact pins and to, that I gave out. I visited Cambridge Elementary, and there were several people there. First, I want to give a shout out to Ms. Christine, who's the cafe manager. She's amazing, she comes under budget all the time. That kitchen and staff is amazing, and I had the opportunity of working with them during the lunch week, and I wanted to give her an impact pin, because of the impact she provides to these students with the quality food and to get their brains working for us. And then, I also wanted to give a shout out to Cambridge to Rachel Zayas, Carrie Sims, Monique Vargas. Two are ELA teachers, and the other are science teachers, the other, and Ms. Vargas is a science teacher, and these three teachers have made tremendous gains at that school. They were very moved, the kids in that class, you can tell what wonderful teachers they are because of the engagement of the students in that classroom and how excited they were that their teacher got this, these impact pins. They cheer them, and unfortunately, we embarrassed one teacher totally. That wasn't the idea, but turned totally red. But it was wonderful to be able to do that. And last but not least, I was able to give an excellent Achiever Award pin to, right here in ESF, to our superintendent secretary, Tammy Geary, who works tirelessly, hard worker, she'll do anything we ask her. We have her working on a project right now for us, and if you go in that room, you see all these little bits and pieces, but it's just amazing. We're very lucky to have her, and I wanted to give her, to celebrate her also. And last but not least, I stopped by Saturn Elementary the other day, and let me tell you, they got some great bakers there. I participated at the cookie exchange. I did not take any cookies, but I brought some. They all looked wonderful. It was nice to meet with Mr. Sean and also Ms. Jackie, and I was lucky enough to meet the new principal, but I won't steal that thunder. We'll introduce her, and I'm very excited that she's coming to our school, so, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Dr. Mullins, did you have any recognitions you wanted to share?
Yes, if I may, I wanted to give a shout out. I had the privilege of attending Kennedy Middle School's 23rd Annual Medieval Festival, and I didn't know what I was given, is that on my calendar? The invite came a long time ago. I show up in the parking lot, and it is, there's a line, like, out to the street to get in, and had no idea the magnitude of this event. But Ms. Sweeney has been teacher at Kennedy, has been spearheading the Medieval Festival for twenty-three years, along with Ms. Jensen and Mr. Bertram, but it was a great team effort. The whole school comes around the event. There were guilds represented in the commons area, there were students doing one-act plays, there was entertainment with jugglers and joke tellers, and then, there was a wonderful concert at the end of the evening, and it was really an impressive, impressive event and only possible by the support of the teachers there at Kennedy. Also, a week and a half ago, at the Space Coast League of Cities meeting, had the repeat absolute pleasure of hearing our Coco High Carnegie Chorus perform several, yes, several holiday songs at Space Coast League of Cities. Dr. Martinez, the chorus director, you know, the community just went above and beyond to rally around the chorus to send them to Carnegie Hall, raised eighty thousand dollars. What's so impressive, these kids, their enthusiasm, their exuberance, the chorus teacher's presence and enthusiasm, to continue to give back to the community and go to an event after event after event and continue to bring her chorus just as a real testament to the commitment to the community. So, thank you, Dr. Martinez, for your re-return of, you know, appreciation to the community, and just a phenomenal performance, really got the holiday spirit started. And last, I want to acknowledge that in this month's edition of Space Coast Business, one of our very own is recognized as a Space Coast Business Leader of the Year, Ms. Janice Schultz, our Career and Tech Ed Director for Brevard Schools, a great showcase of her. Yeah, let's give her a round of applause, she's out there somewhere.[1313.01][1313.01](applause). She received the Joseph Duda Leadership Award, and it's to no surprise, it is so well-deserved as Brevard's career and technical education programs continue to get recognition and acknowledgement across the state as others come and see how we do CTE to do it right. So, congratulations to Janice.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. So, first, I will introduce and welcome Ms. DeGresta to join us today. As you all know, Ms. Amy Enval, who was our previous general counsel, left us. I say that with just slight bitterness, but, but no, we congratulate her. But we have hired a new general counsel who will be joining us in January, but Ms. DeGresta was kind enough to step in today to fill in for our general counsel, both during the board meeting tonight as our parliamentarian, and also earlier today during our expulsion hearings and workshops. So, welcome to, I know you have been in Brevard and worked with us previously, so it's not like we're new to you, but welcome to officially sitting with us during the board meeting, and thank you for your service today. Also, many of you have heard us, for those of you who watch the board meetings on a regular basis, have heard us for the past several meetings recognizing Major Walters. We will not be recognizing Major Walters tonight, because Major Walters has left us as well. It seems that we do such a great job of bringing people up in Brevard County that the sheriff continues to promote our head of district security, and so, Major Walters has been promoted to commander and has been pulled out of district security, but we are very happy to welcome our new head of district security, Major Brandon, and I'm just going to leave it at that, because I've been told that you prefer Brandon overall else. So, he is, he is in the back of the room and has joined us this week to lead our district security office. So, welcome, we're glad that you're here, and we look forward to getting to know you. On a bit of a sadder point, many of you probably heard, we have two canine officers here in our district that work in our schools, and Deputy Gwininger, he's not deputy, is he deputy?
Corporal.
Corporal Gwininger, and his dog Sonic, who many got to know. We very unfortunately lost Sonic over the Thanksgiving holiday, he had to be put down, so that is a huge loss for the district. Corporal Gwininger has received a new dog who I've not yet had the chance to meet, but if you see him out and about, please welcome Jake to the team and give Corporal Gwininger a little pat on the back or hug, because I know it's been tough. So, we look forward to meeting Jake as well and bringing him on board. Going to touch briefly on the goats, just because I feel like we have to touch on the goats, and Tina, Tina talked about it, but I actually had the opportunity to get out there, I wasn't there for the first day, but I was out there last week, and the goats actually finished four days ahead of schedule. They were much more efficient and effective than we anticipate anticipated them being. They did a phenomenal job at Imperial Estates in really rough terrain. I was able to go out there and navigate the terrain that they were eating and meet, you know, one of the concerns that we had with bringing equipment in there was the gopher tortoises that are on the, in that area, and bringing our heavy equipment in there could have been detrimental to them. Got to meet one of the resident gopher tortoises, who was perfectly comfortable with the goats, no concern whatsoever for the goats. Latte was very happy to give me some nibbles on the nose and some little nose rubs while I was there. The interesting thing is that Imperial Estates completely embraced the goat culture. They now have goat shirts for Imperial Estates. Their, their former mascot was Dolphin, I don't know if they're officially changing, but now, they have goat shirts for Imperial Estates. And their Christmas decorations in the lobby, when you walk in, was a goat reindeer. So, they, they have had a lot of fun with it, and the goats did a great job, and they, of course, were, were great therapy for teachers and staff while they were there as well. So, Sue and team, thank you so much for, for making that happen, and please keep us posted where the goats are going to be posted next, so we can drop in. On a little bit more serious note, had the opportunity prior to Thanksgiving break to visit the Innovation Lab at Space Coast Junior/Senior. Ms. M is here tonight, and wanted to thank you for the great work that you are doing there. If you are not familiar with the Innovation Lab at Space Coast Junior/Senior, they are doing some phenomenal work there with project-based learning and cross-curricular work, and we got to see some of the students present, and I was just absolutely in awe of the creativity that they brought and the absolute depth of understanding of the work that they were focusing on. So, thank you, Ms. M and team, for bringing the opportunity to the students. We all, I think, all of the board members had the opportunity last week to attend the Space Coast Realtors Association luncheon, and if you are not familiar with them, they do an enormous amount for our students in our schools. Last week's luncheon was basically an appreciation for, and an opportunity for networking with Realtors throughout the county and with the elected officials to continue to build that relationship, but they go above and beyond to support a lot of our most needy students and to really make connections with others in the community on behalf of the schools. So, many thanks to Space Coast Realtors. And the last thing that I have, I had the opportunity today to present Ms. Moore, Chris Moore, from our Student Services Department with an impact pin. For those of you who don't know, she runs our Student Services Department, which includes all of our ESE, psychological services, all of our discipline, all, I mean, it is, there's an enormous amount that is included in her department. And, and sports, all of sports. This year has been, if you can imagine, everything that has come down from the state with regard to threat assessment, she has been involved in. All of the work that we did on heart screenings in the district, she was involved in. I am happy to announce and so thankful to Ms. Moore that our RBT packets went out last week, so that we can have those RBTs in place when we come back to school. That all fell on her plate, in addition to just the enormous amounts of work that is typically on her plate. And some of the work that she does is very emotional and challenging, and like we see in so many areas, we don't always have the funds to do things the way that we would like to do things, and she works really, really hard to make sure that we are doing things to the best of our abilities and really maximizing those investments. So, Ms. Moore, thank you for all that you do, we appreciate you. And I believe that that brings us to the adoption of the agenda.
Ms. Belford and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one presentation, twenty-four consent items, and five action items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Items A7 on administrative staff recommendations and F11 on student expulsions. Every time I get the microphone, it downpour is. G35 on department-school initiated- Every time I get the microphone, it downpour is. G35 on Department School Initiated Agreements have received revisions. The Consent Item on Operating Debt Service Capital Project Funds and Special Revenue Food Services has been deleted from this agenda.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskevich. Any discussion? The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, would you please let us know about the Administrative Staff Recommendations?
Madam Chair, there are six persons on this agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
So, at this time, I'd like to welcome and recognize first, Mr. Greg Rubik on his reclassification and transfer from the position of Assistant Principal at Bayside High School to the position of Principal at Port Malabar Elementary School. Congratulations, Mr. Rubik.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I just want to start off by thanking Dr. Mullins and school board members and Ms. Jane Klein for this opportunity. Also want to thank Holly Xander, my current principal, for the next three days. Ms. Wybell, my previous principal and mentor, and all my mentors that have just given me some great growth opportunities and learning experiences. And actually, most of them are on this back panel right here. So, thank you all for everything. And last but not least, my family for love and support. And to Port Malabar staff, it's good to be back. So, thank you.[723.01][723.01][applause]
Next, congratulations go out to Ms. Corey Hurst on her transfer from the position of Principal at Riviera Elementary to Principal at Saturn Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Hurst.[740.23][740.23][applause]
I would like to thank Dr. Mullins and the board for allowing me the opportunity to go home because that's where I actually went to elementary school. I look forward to the opportunity to work with the Saturn staff and teachers there. And most of all, I'll miss my Riviera manatean. And I know that they're going to be in good hands, and I appreciate Mrs. Klein and Dr. Mullin for all their support in my first three and a half years as a principal.[770.23][770.23][applause]
Also want to congratulate Mr. Joseph Flora on his reclassification and transfer from the position of Principal at James Madison Middle School to the position of Principal at Space Coast Junior/Senior High School. Congratulations, Mr. Flora.[790.32][790.32][applause]
I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Mullins for this opportunity. I am super excited to go to Space Coast and to continue some of the good work that Ms. Majeskevich has done there. I'd like to give a huge shout out to Dr. Sullivan. She is just phenomenal for her leadership, encouragement, and support. The amazing directors in secondary leading and learning who have helped me grow over the last couple of years, Mr. Novelli back there. Thank you for the encouragement. My family, my wife, my children, my parents who are here tonight. I couldn't do it without your love and encouragement. And then my administrative team at Madison, my teachers, students, parents. It's been a great two years, and I'm going to miss them. But thank you all again.[842.69][842.69][applause]
And last, but certainly not least, and rather bittersweet, we want to recognize Ms. Ina Leiva, Principal of Sea Park Elementary, on her upcoming retirement at the end of this school year. Ms. Leiva, thank you for your many years of dedicated service to the students, staff, and community members that comprise Brevard Public Schools, and obviously most recently and for many years, your Sea Park family. We appreciate your leadership. We appreciate your commitment to the, the kids of, of Sea Park and the parents and families. We're glad we have you for the remainder of the school year, but you will be missed as, as a part of the leadership team of Brevard.
Thank you, Dr. Mullin. Good evening, board members and fellow principals that are here tonight. Again, it is bittersweet. August 2020 will be 40 years that I've been in this profession. So, it's going to be very difficult to kind of walk away. Thank you. Twenty-seven of those years have been here in Brevard County. So, I've got lots of good tutelage. My children, all three of them, are products of Brevard Public Schools. I have two pharmacists, and I have a director for HSN. So, Brevard Schools did an excellent job with my children, and they are doing very well because of the foundation laid here in Brevard County. I want to say congratulations to our new appointees tonight. I am sure they'll do an excellent job with excellence as the standard and with the support of the board members here. Thank you to Mrs. Klein for supporting me all these years as I work at Sea Park. And I have one quote that I would like to leave with all of you, and it says, "I have learned that living life that matters, living life that matters doesn't happen by accident. It's not a matter of circumstances but of choice. I hope that my work over the years mattered and made an impact for the families that I've served." Again, congratulations to all of the new principals here tonight, and thank you very much.[978.51][978.51][applause]
Ms. Duskevich?
Ms. Leiva, I just wanted to personally thank you for all your years of service. I know the, you threatened to retire last year, and the Sea Park community, including my own family members. You've had my nephews over the years, and we're going to miss you. You have been a great principal. I know the community loves you. That sweet little school loves you and adores you, and it's, it's a great loss for our district to have you retire. But thank you for your service.
Dr. Mullins, will you please provide us information about our presentation this evening?
Yes. Mr. Gary Shifrin, Chair of the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, or ICOC, will present for us this evening and the viewing audience, the ICOC Annual Report. Mr. Shifrin, thank you for coming tonight and presenting the information.
Chairperson Belford, school board members, Dr. Mullins, it's my honor to be here for the fifth year to present the annual report of the ICOC and the SRTAX. And once again, we have wonderful news to share as we have exceeded our expectations and are going beyond to improve Brevard County schools and all that we have to offer. So, let me begin. This slide reflects the current membership of the ICOC. The charter requires at least seven and no more than 11 members. The school board appoints the ICOC members based on a recommendation from the ICOC. I would like to introduce to you Sherri O'Shea, one of our ICOC members that has served the ICOC since 2015. Mr. Shifrin, Mr. Cavolucci, Ms. Spellman, Mr. Blennis, Mrs. O'Shea, and Mr. Young were recently reappointed by the school board to serve an additional two-year term through February of 2022. At that point, it'll be time for me to retire. The other five members of the ICOC have staggered terms. By charter, the ICOC remains active until all sales SRTAX funds have been expended in the event the sales SRTAX is renewed. The charter remains in effect but may be modified by the school board. One suggestion for future may be to improve how terms are staggered. The purpose of the ICOC is to provide general oversight of the sales SRTAX expenditures. The ICOC meets every other month, and we review a detailed package of information that includes revenues, expenditures, and project status. The ICOC receives regular briefings on related topics such as the facility assessment project, security, and sales SRTAX program audits. The annual report covers the sales SRTAX program from its inception through September 30th, 2019. However, the revenues and expenditures I will report to you tonight are updated through November 19, or 30th, 2019. The written report has much more detail, and the appendices contain considerable reference material regarding the ICOC and the sales SRTAX program. The sales SRTAX program was built from facility assessments done in-house in 2014 prior to the referendum. A very specific program of work was developed for each facility based on a priority score and matrix for facility renewal. However, in aggregate, this program only funded 22% of the identified facility renewal needs. This means some facility renewal projects may seem incomplete or perform poorly after construction. The framework for district school security has continued to evolve since the inception of the sales SRTAX program. Initially, only 2.9% of the sales SRTAX program, or $5.7 million, was allocated to fencing and access control. In 2018, the ICOC recommended advanced funding the district school security program to implement additional eligible security projects recommended by district security. As of November 2019, approximately $12.4 million has been encumbered or expensed for security projects. The additional investment and acceleration of security projects was a direct result of the ICOC's recommendations to the school board. The loan from facility renewal funds to advanced security projects has now been fully repaid. Throughout the life of the sales SRTAX program, there were significant gaps between the 2014 facilities assessment and the actual condition of buildings and equipment. It has been challenging to plan and budget for each project without reliable information. District staff and the ICOC have advocated for the need for better data in order to deliver better projects. This year, the district embarked on an ambitious effort to conduct a comprehensive facilities need assessment for all schools and most administrative sites, totaling about 10 million square feet. This program will support budgeting, planning, and prioritizing for capital assess, asset maintenance, replacement, and refurbishment. Although the project is still underway, the facilities assessment completed so far are being used by staff to improve the scope of the summer 2020 sales SRTAX projects and planned facility renewal work that was deferred from early sales SRTAX projects. The results are also being used to design and implement a pilot preventive maintenance program. In addition, the district has engaged a consultant to provide a comprehensive analysis of security at all schools and most administrative facilities. This security evaluation is expected to be completed in the spring of 2020. Although the scopes of both assessment projects are broader than eligible sales SRTAX expenditure categories, the ICOC will be considering the assessment results when finalizing their recommendation to the school board regarding the allocation of sales SRTAX revenues in excess of the original $190 million. Until that time, recommendations for allocations are made on a case-by-case basis. Through November 30th, 2019, program revenue totaled $210 million, which exceeds estimates by roughly $54 million. The program budget target of $198 million was reached in August of this year. The accelerated collections have been, have allowed the district to address critical failures and broaden the scope of projects to better serve students and consider lifecycle costs. This slide shows the comparison of revenues for each month. Overall revenues in calendar year 2019 were about 2% higher than in 2018. This slide shows the recent estimate of revenue over $198 million program target. The ICOC has made a preliminary recommendation to allocate 50% to security, 35% to facility renewal, and 15% to educational technology. This recommendation will be updated based on data from the facility and security assessments. In the meantime, the ICOC considers allocation of these funds on a case-by-case basis and then makes a recommendation to the school board regarding specific project allocations. Several of these will be on your agenda in January. Sales SRTAX encumbrances and expenditures totaled $151 million through November 30th. This time of year, staff is in the process of contracting for our summer 2020 work, most of which will be encumbered with construction contracts in January through March of 2020. Note that over $18 million in capital funds have been used to supplement the sales SRTAX work. This is primarily in support of air conditioning projects that do not have sufficient sales SRTAX resources. Particularly noteworthy is that sales SRTAX resources have been deployed in the schools on or ahead of the schedule that was originally planned in 2014. Expenditures are heavily focused on contracted services, which include contractors, construction managers, and design builders. The district uses the Owner Direct Purchase Program, which allows the district to purchase major equipment and materials directly, thereby saving sales tax. So far, owner-direct purchases totaled over $21 million, which translates to a sales tax savings of over $1 million that is reinvested in projects. The summer 2019 construction season included 16 major projects and three minor facility renewal projects, as well as the construction, continuation of the projects at Central Middle School, Cocoa Junior/Senior High School, and West Shore Junior/Senior High School. The first 55 major facility projects have been substantially completed through summer 2019, with three additional projects completed earlier than scheduled. 29 school or special center projects are scheduled for summer 2020. Ancillary facilities and the district-wide covered walkway projects are also under development to complete the program. The current plan is to complete all of the school facility renewal projects as identified in the original 2014 program by fall of 2020. The facility renewal expenditures are heavily focused on mechanical system renewal, which is consistent with the original intent of the program. One area of significant need has been air conditioning controls, also known as the building automation system. This was one of the common failure points of the early sales SRTAX projects, but is now an area that is a priority for investment. Fortunately, because of either unused budget or new revenues, the staff can also go back to completed schools and address identified but unfunded needs. Intercom renewal is a good example where failure has been identified by principals or district security, and the resources can be invested to address the problem. The district's internal auditors, RSM, perform semi-annual audits of the program. The eighth audit was recently completed with no findings. All audits have been positive and are available to the public for review. The district's construction auditors, Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, audit each project over $1 million and small projects on a spot-check basis. Their purpose is to ensure compliance with the contract and validate the final pay request. Most sales SRTAX projects are subject to construction audits. The ICOC has an important oversight role in the sales SRTAX program. Members are engaged in the process through bi-monthly Members are engaged in the process through bi-monthly meetings, field visits, audit questionnaires, and closed-session briefings on security. The ICOC members bring a wealth of experience and diversity to the process. In addition to our oversight role, the ICOC has helped to guide the evolution of the sales surtax program. Examples include advancing the security projects and recommending sales surtax investments for revenue received over the $190 million program target. The ICOC has been briefed on the facility assessment project and the security assessment project. Both tools will be excellent resources to drive future capital investment decisions, including the expected balance of the sales surtax program. As the sales surtax program enters the final stages, the ICOC is confident that the district continues to implement the program in accordance with the ballot initiative and district policies and procedures. The appendices to the annual report include further documentation regarding the program that may be of interest, including the charter, details on prioritization, status of construction contracts, and detailed expenditure summaries. All of the information, as well as each ICOC agenda package, is posted on the website for public review. As members of the ICOC, we appreciate the opportunity to serve our community. That concludes my presentation. I would be happy to take any questions.
I will open up for questions momentarily, but Mr. Shifrin, I just want to thank you and all of the ICOC members for all of the work that you have put in. I too have been around sales tax since the inception in one way, shape, or another, and I truly believe that without your commitment and assistance, we would not have received the sales tax initially, because the commitment of the ICOC was important to that process. And certainly, you all have done a phenomenal job of making sure that we are sticking to our word on the expenditures of those sales tax. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that each and every one of you do. I know it's not an easy job. You all don't rubber stamp. You are truly digging into all that is taking place, and we appreciate you.
On behalf of the committee, I thank you.
Thank you. Any board members or Dr. Mullins want to make any comments? Have any questions?
No questions. I just want to echo Ms. Belford's appreciation, Mr. Susan's as well. I'm grateful, Mr. Shifrin, that you failed retirement, and we're willing to come back and serve in this capacity and serve well and bring 100% to this committee. So, thank you for your leadership and for the entire ICOC to ensure that we uphold the trust and confidence of our community and what they have given us the opportunity to do for our schools.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Tuskovich?
Our document isn't the same as the presentation, so I can't reference back, but can you just go back to where you had the months listed out, once we passed the $190 million? Just, yeah, that's what I'm looking for, but I can't see it. I don't have it up on our screen. No, maybe that wasn't the one. Can you just tell me, because you went by so quick? Did the ICOC vote to use the future money in a percentages for security and technology? I thought you said 50% security for...
Correct. In other words, because of the realization that security is a priority, the remaining monies above the $198 million, it'll be 50% for security, 35% for facility, and 15% for technology.
And was that unanimous? I'm just, I don't mean to be picking you apart. I'm just curious more than anything. I haven't had a discussion offline with you at all, so...
I can tell you the discussion was really intense in regards to our feelings in regards to security. And then that got started way back when we were discussing about implementing security, and it was like spread out over the six years, and we said, "No, no, we can't do that. God forbid something happened while we were in the process of going to do something." And so, that's why we upped it, you know, to be done in a matter of years, a few years.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I know Ms. Belford and Dr. Mullins gave you all the shout-out already, but I don't want to be too redundant, but your work and the work of your team is so professional. It's not done half-heartedly. It's very detailed. I'm blown away and impressed and really, really grateful, and our community should be impressed. There's other organizations throughout our community that are entrusted with taxpayer money that don't rise to what you all have done with your own spare time in unpaid positions, and I just don't think words are enough to express our gratitude for what you're doing.
Thank you. And I would be remiss not to say, if it wasn't for this lady right here, a lot of this would not be happening. I mean, Sue is just an amazing person. She deserves a raise, lifetime contract, whatever it takes.
We'd like the lifetime contract. We like that.
She deserves that.
Yeah, I can motion right now. Lifetime.
Mr. Susan, did you have a...
Yeah, I just wanted to say that originally, the half-penny cent sales tax, one of the issues we were running into when I got elected onto it when it originally was inceptioned, is that it was only 4% of the entire thing was set aside for security. So, when you're looking at the needs of this district, how they grew since the beginning and inception of this, Mr. Shifrin was right in the fact that they were trying to literally get out ahead of all of those projects as fast as they can, and that unto itself was a great accomplishment. So, I just wanted to kind of tell, we went from 4% to 50% is a significant increase to show the commitment to that portion of our budget. So, that's what I just wanted to kind of clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan.
Quick question for you, Mr. Shifrin, and I hope I'm not catching you off guard. I don't think I will. In the document, and I didn't see it in the presentation tonight, I was kind of looking through this and looking back and forth, there was someplace reference to the initial facility assessments, the total dollar amount needed to address the facility needs at that point in time, and the actual dollar amount that we were receiving via the sales tax. And I want to say that even though we have gone over the amounts of money that we anticipated bringing in for the sales tax, I feel like we are only able to fund like 26% of the facility needs at that point in time?
22%, actually.
22.
But you're exactly right. The assessment in 2014 revealed a whole lot of other needs, and, you know, based on the six-year of the sales tax, we projected, or it was projected, for $198 million. Again, we've done better. We've had more people come to Florida, and they've spent money, and so, you know, but yeah, there's still a lot yet to be done, a lot yet to be done.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. Any additional comments or questions for Mr. Shifrin before we move on? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you all.
We are now at public comments. The school board policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes. The portion of the meeting during which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment, the policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by a vote of the board. We have seven speakers scheduled for this evening, so we have no need to expand. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We understand that that's a short period of time, and in the event that you are not able to get your information in in that three minutes, please know that board member email addresses, as well as phone contact, are available on the website, and we encourage you to reach out if you have more to say. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statement should be directed to the board chairman. The chairman may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or are watching from home. We'll begin with our first three speakers, Anthony Calucci, Vanessa Skipper, and Carol Green.
Wait a minute, what? Ms. Green in the back?
Ms. Green in the back is speaking to us tonight on behalf of our 10-10 group.
Oh, okay.
I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. In your hands is a side-by-side of two funding plans for public education in Florida. On the left is the Florida Education Association's Decade of Progress, and on the right is Governor DeSantis's $47,500 teacher proposal, teacher pay proposal. FEA's Decade of Progress is a long-term investment and proven policy. The governor's proposal is a one-time proposal and flawed policy. FEA's plan recognizes the value of experienced teachers and support staff and attracts new teachers to our state. The governor's plan dishonors experienced teachers and vital paraprofessional staff. FEA's plan is constitutionally sound, where the governor's proposal is constitutionally suspect. FEA's plan is a 10-year investment. The governor's proposal is a one-and-done policy with no plan for financial sustainability. FEA's plan recognizes all employees and funds a 10% increase for all public school employees. The governor's proposal fails to recognize over 40,000 of our most qualified teachers and all of our valuable support staff. FEA's plan expands student opportunity and access. The governor's plan does not address vital needs in higher education. FEA's Decade of Progress recognizes local decision-making free of state mandates. The governor's proposal ignores local needs and imposes state mandates. FEA's plan increases student access to mental health services and restores critical programs such as science, libraries, music, art, and theater, and the governor's proposal continues unfunded mandates and doesn't expand services. FEA's Decade of Progress is a reliable salary that all hard-working employees can depend on. Governor's proposal leaves out at least 25% of hard-working teachers and all our support staff. FEA's plan is a proven effective strategy with recruitment and retention. Governor's plan, ineffective bonus plan over decades of failed iterations. FEA's plan positively impacts mortgages, loans, and counts towards retirement. Governor's plan, more bonus schemes. FEA's plan moves Florida the top 10%, and the governor's plan leaves us stagnant at the bottom 10% in teacher pay and support staff. I see, I only have 16 seconds here, so let me say this. It was extremely disappointing that the Florida Superintendent's Association and the School Boards Association chose to endorse Governor DeSantis's flawed plan over FEA's Decade of Progress, and you guys are going to own all these problems that come with DeSantis's plan if it is passed.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci.
Can I follow up and ask him a quick question?
When all the speakers are done.
Good evening. Vanessa Skipper, Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. There is a question we must all ask ourselves in our line of work, and that is, when my time is up, have I done enough? On November 25th, I had the opportunity to substitute at Stone Middle. The course was intensive reading, and the students had been without a teacher all semester at that point. I was excited to spend my day with students again, and I truly expected to hear the yay, it's a sub, except for they'd had a sub since the beginning of school. So, instead, I heard, "Are you our teacher? Please be our teacher." The disappointment in their eyes when I said no was almost unbearable. One student completely shut down. He was thrilled to see me at the door, because he thought I was his teacher, and then refused to do any work once he realized I wasn't there to stay. Tina, you sat by that student when you came to my class during your planning time, because you subbed there as well, and I knew that I needed to do something different, because every kid that was coming into that classroom probably would expect the same from me. While I feel that I had more success in the classes that followed since I rearranged the seating setup and I approached the lesson a little bit differently, I was still met with the increasingly painful, "Are you our teacher?" We are not doing everything that we can do for every student in this district. We're simply not. There are still 81 positions advertised. 41 of those advertisements are re-advertisements. Every day, a classroom is without a teacher, our students are being sold short, denied the skill and devotion from a certified and experienced educator that could engage them in both a specific subject and a love of learning. It is time for this district to change its approach. It's clear that Tallahassee may not always come up with the best plan. It's clear that we need to do something different and innovative in the way that we approach teacher salary and the way that we approach not only recruiting teachers, but also retaining teachers. You can recruit teachers all day long, and we can train them up, and they can leave us with the experience they got for either greener pastures or, goodness forbid, a different career. There's one thing that I have not heard the board address, and that's going out for millage. We have come to you guys time and time again with solution, because I believe that if you're presenting a problem, you should present a solution. We've dug into the budget, and we've asked you to go out for millage several times. We put into place a longevity supplement last year that could be expanded so much for both teachers coming into the district and also those who have been here for a while. But it is incumbent upon everyone that sits up there to make a decision and make a plan. You're not going to be able to depend on Tallahassee to do it for you. Your legacy isn't something you leave.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper.
It's what you do every single day. When your time is up, will you have done enough? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Ms. Green?
Good evening, Board. Dr. Mullins, I am here to present the results of the IUPAT Local 10-10 Vote on the tentatively agreed-upon contract for 2019 and '20. The reason I am here this evening is because the business representative was not able to be here this evening, and the administrative assistant's mother passed yesterday, so they asked if I would please provide the information. Your IUPAT and Local 10-10 employees cover our schools in every area, from the time the bus drivers bring our kids to school in those buses that are maintained by our awesome technicians and mechanics, to our well-maintained facilities because of our painters, electricians, custodians, masons, plumbers, roofers, athletics and grounds folks, carpenters. Our students are taken care of in the schools by our cafeteria workers, our IAs, both ESAL and ESE, media aides, interpreters, and transliterators, our pre-K and VPK, Brevard Aftercare, Title 1 e-learning, behavior tech, auditorium managers, and our students and our adults are well-cared for by our support staff like bookkeepers, attendants, data and guidance clerks, campus monitors. Our ESF people and our superintendent and staff are supported by accountants and buyers, administrative secretaries, computer operators, employment benefits, data management, and help desk specialists, auditors, and coordinators. Our 10-10 employees make up almost 30% of our workforce, and we need them to help our teachers to be able to provide their best learning efforts for all of our students in the name of academic achievement. I'm pleased to provide the results of the vote this evening on the tentative agreement of 2019-'20 IUPAT Local 10-10 Agreement with Brevard Public Schools. Their voting constituents doubled this year. They had 12% of their employees vote last year, 25% of their employees voted this year, and 96% of those employees voted in favor of this newly negotiated contract. So, we thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our next three speakers are Alan, Tracy, and Kathy.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Mullins, over the next week to 10 days, you will receive in each of your mailboxes a media kit from 321 Sports Cast. My name is Alan Slodzinski, and this gentleman standing here with me is Tracy Rayo, and he is my partner, but I wanted you to put some faces to 321 Sports Cast before you read this media kit. 321 Sports Cast was launched back in May. We created 321 Sports Cast to give all student athletes a platform like they've never had here in Brevard County, where all sports, all skill levels, and all ages were recognized, just not for their efforts on the field, but off the just not for their efforts on the field but off the field as well. What we found over the last seven months is that we are Brevard County's only all-sports multimedia company, and not only have we played a part in athletics on and off the field, but we really feel like that we're becoming an outstanding member of this community. We've participated and helped promote great events like October's Making Strides Against Breast Cancer event. In the seven months since we launched, our obvious goal is to broadcast and spotlight our student athletes. We've broadcast over 200 sporting events from Little League to Pop Warner to middle school to high school, and we feature both of our local colleges. While, of course, we broadcast football, we also put a spotlight on deserving student athletes in sports like bowling, cross-country, soccer, swimming, and who knows, maybe a little bit of drone racing as well. And in fact, our most viewed sport at all of this was bowling, so we're very happy about that. We feature daily student athletes from the elementary to high school level in things like Little Peeps and Future Stars. And again, while we profile their accolades on the field, we feel it's equally as important to feature what they do off the field and in the classroom. Our largest shared post to date on our social media platform was members of the Bayside Football Team helping members of the community get prepared for impending Hurricane Dorian. Our goal is to not only show the sports our student athletes play, but help promote themselves in ways that never existed for them in this county before, with the opportunity to help further their educations, and if the goals persist for them on the field, that as well. While our goal tonight is to introduce all of you to 321 Sports Cast, our goals in the immediate future are a little bit deeper. We would like to somehow eventually partner with the community and members of the school board to become a bigger part using students in the classroom for media, for multimedia, and educating them on how to become broadcast journalists. I've covered sports and news and breaking news in this county for six years and as a whole for the past 12.
Thank you, Alan. Your three minutes are up. I don't know if you want to pass off to Tracy or...
I think I do.
All right.
All right. So I want to talk a little bit about the heart of 321 Sports Cast, and I'm going to spend the first 30 seconds to tell you about some quotes that come in. Because everybody sees the sports, it's fun from the viewer perspective, but from my perspective, when you get an email or a message from a dad that says, "I watched my son from Iraq." Russell had a lot of fans watching VR Little League down there from here that couldn't make the trip down to Coral Springs. Bowlers that send us messages and say, "Man, in 30 years, no one's ever cared about a bowler." So our goal is, like you said, all sports, all ages, all kids. I have a daughter. I'm a product of Rockledge High, went to Anderson, Kennedy, and Rockledge. I have a daughter that graduated Rockledge and played lacrosse and soccer. And at the same time, she was coming out, and she was a pretty good athlete. She didn't get any recognition from basically anybody, and she ended up getting a scholarship. And so the thought process hit me and Alan and said, "There's so many boys and girls that bowl and play lacrosse, and they play soccer, and every other sport that Brevard offers." And we all know that Brevard's a kickbuck community when it comes to sports, but not a lot of them get recognition. So we were on a mission to say, "How can we give more recognition to more kids, all sports, all ages, and keep those comments coming in for an aunt or an uncle who got to watch their niece or nephew play from North Carolina? We've had people watch it from South Korea." So from the heart, those are the messages that keep us going to build this thing, to try to do it ethically, to try to present the kids in a fashion that really, really uplifts a kid who might change their life because they got recognition. Anyone who's ever had their name in a newspaper by the great Barbara Kaywood back in the day knows how good that feels to get your name in the paper. So now we have a platform that more kids not only get their name in the paper, but we give them a microphone so you hear their voice, you learn about their favorite foods, you get to know about their GPA and all the good things they're doing in the schools. We're also on a mission to get every athletic director, every coach, every member of the community on board because the momentum can help drive this platform into something that no one's ever seen before. And we've been getting messages from people in Texas and Volusia County and Orange County saying, "How can we duplicate that?" And that's a big challenge right now. We don't have the answer to that. But we are working every day to make it better, to channel the energy, channel the momentum, to get every sport, every parent involved, and make it the best platform. So if anyone's not following 321 Sports Cast on Facebook, that's our workhorse, although we're also on Instagram, YouTube, Snapchat, the website, and all that good stuff. And we just appreciate anybody who supports us and has ideas and thoughts and anything that can help us improve. So that's my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, we have Kathy West, and then our last speaker after Kathy will be Sherrell DeSilva.
How y'all doing tonight? My name is Kathy West. I'm a substitute teacher. I'm here to speak on behalf of the subs. We have not received a raise yet, and I'm still waiting. Here's the cover of Time Magazine. Teachers are saying they can't afford to go to the doctor. They can't support their kids. Wendy's is paying $12 an hour. This is what my gas hand looks like trying to go to work. That's ridiculous. Too many people are not getting paid enough money. I don't approve of it, and something needs to be done because how am I supposed to get to work if I don't have gas? Okay, that concludes my announcement. Oh, I do have something else to say. We should not be paying for fingerprinting. I got the fingerprint letter in the mail, and I had to put the fingerprint fee on a charge card. That's ridiculous. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. West, for joining us. We are, yeah, we have one more speaker, and then I'm going to open it up for comments from Board and Superintendent for any of the speakers. Okay?
Good evening, Board. I'm Sherrell DeSilva. I am the parent of a cute little kindergartner at Quest. I've been coming to your meetings since before he even started school based on feedback that I was hearing from the community.
Ms. DeSilva, hold on one second. Ms. West, I think there's going to be some response to your questions if you can just hang out until Ms. DeSilva's done. She's our last speaker, okay? I apologize, Ms. DeSilva. I just didn't want her to walk out. Go ahead.
That's fine, no problem. So I've been coming to these meetings before, you know, he even started school. Was very excited to see the new elementary school was approved earlier this year, last year? I don't remember. Went to the meeting in May that we had at Quest going over the new zoning and boundaries. Myself and many of our neighbors are very, very excited to, you know, see that proposal since we contributed to the problem. We all built, you know, south of Wickham, most of the overcrowding is because of us and is going to continue to get worse. We acknowledge that. So we had no problem, you know, paying and contributing to this new school. However, back on November 1st, we received an email, much to our surprise, stating that the school will be open boundary. All students in the county are open to apply, pay a $30 fee, and they could be accepted into the school. Several concerns that we have, and you guys can address this tonight, or if you'd like to send an email, you know, supplementing the previous one, that'd be great. Basically, the four questions are, how will an open-boundary school affect or alleviate any of the overcrowding we are seeing? I know Quest is over 1,200 kids right now. I'm not sure where mandatory numbers are. The second being, what is the $30 fee actually used for? The third question is, will any of the students that are at the overcrowded schools be given priority to attend the new school? And then the fourth question is, has the school board considered doing similar in VR as they did in West Melbourne with Meadow Lane, where instead of having two elementary schools, there's an elementary and then an intermediate? So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeSilva. Okay, at this point, I will open it up for Board members or Superintendent who wishes to respond to speakers. Mr. Susan, I think you're tromping it a bit, so go for it.
It's okay. Would you rather me say, like, because somebody may say something about substitutes, so would you rather me say, "Hey, I'm a substitute issue," and then let you guys do it? Or do you want me just run through all my questions?
Yeah, just say what you want to say, and then we'll take turns.
All right. So pre-K in your proposal, are the pre-K teachers covered in your proposal? Good. And in the governor's proposal, it is not, correct? Right.
You need to fix it.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that currently, the governor's proposal does not include our pre-K teachers for being included in this raise, this $47,000. All right. The next one I wanted to say was, can somebody from 321 come up real quick? Because I've got to ask a quick question about something else. Something that came up while I was, I went up and watched Cocoa up at Bowles, okay? And the first thing I want to tell you is that that, there was an unfair contest in the fact that Bowles can recruit and do a bunch of other stuff. It was, their facility and everything else was top-notch. But what really got me upset, this really got me hot, was the fact that our news media people were not allowed at all to run the thing live, okay? Now, let me explain to you why that upsets you, is because you've got people from Cocoa that can't drive up to Jacksonville that want to watch their games, and here it is, under FHSAA guidelines, which there's no statutory power for them to do this, have decided to not only tell them no, but then to sell the rights to our kids' games to a company, right, who didn't even cover it correctly and charged our people and have not returned the money that was well-deserved for the individuals to watch the game. So they tried to go to Space Coast Daily or 321 Sports or wherever it was, couldn't do it. Space Coast Daily went up and just did audio, like just tried to run an audio and a picture. It was ridiculous. And the fact is, is that this is the first time that this has ever happened, that they've done this in the semi-pro game, in the playoffs. It gets me so hot because we've got people that are inside your district, Cheryl, who can't afford to go up, and it's going to affect the most disadvantaged schools. And it's something that I wanted to address, but I didn't know if you could actually give me any kind of guidance.
Yeah, actually, I can. The FHSAA has partnered with the NFHA, which is National Federation of High School Broadcasting. And if you are not a part of the National Federation of High School Broadcasting, the fee to broadcast a high school football playoff game is $500 per game. Now, for a company like ours that just launched in May, that's a lot of money.
Considering that we may have multiple games.
That's correct.
You might have Merritt Island, you might have Rockledge, Cocoa, VR.
We spent $1,500 ourselves broadcasting high school football. But the point is, is that if you are a member, if you join with the National Federation for High School Broadcasting, those fees are waived because they are an actual partner with the FHSAA. So, and I have that research ready for you, by the way, as well on that.
So what basically occurs is, is that they have now commoditized our students without our consent for something. In their original inception, FHSAA was created to organize our sports programs, which they do. But their revenue source has increased because they're doing this, whereas the amounts and fees for our students has not decreased. So the question is the why. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask FHSAA and stuff like that, but I did just want that, and I didn't even know you guys were coming tonight. Thank you, Alan, for taking a second and explaining that. I didn't, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there because Cocoa High School deserved to have that thing live, and that was a tragedy, that it wasn't even, not even live, but what program they put in was also wrong. And you know what else? They don't even let them sell, I'm sorry, I'm getting really fired up here. They don't even let them sell actual gear at the event. So if Cocoa goes up, they can't sell the gear unless it's got a logo on the FHSAA logo, which is okay, but FHSAA doesn't even bring anybody inside there to sell gear. Sorry. Just really angry about this. They don't own our kids. FHSAA does not own our kids. Sorry. Okay.
Let us know how we can help.
Okay.
Did you, did you have anything else that you wanted to?
Yeah, I got a couple other things. I'm sorry. I just really got burned up there. Ms. Parent of Quest, I apologize, I didn't have your...
DeSilva.
DeSilva. How does the open bound, can I address these?
If you'd like.
Is that okay? How does the, sorry. Just need to take a second. Really hot about this. Care about my sports. How does the open, oh, wait, I did have something else on there. Tomorrow is National Signing Day. I apologize for jumping back. Cocoa has Kaziah Holmes. He's going for a football scholarship at Penn State. Richie Leonard has a football scholarship to Florida at Cocoa. Alice Clemmons has a softball scholarship to Guilford College, and Garrett Cohn has a swimming for Tampa. And then in Rockledge, Ladarius Tennyson is going to Auburn. Those are no-joke programs, like that's legit. And so everybody knows, Cocoa had the two fastest kids at the NFL Combine this year. Like the two fastest people in the country that ran were from Cocoa. That's phenomenal. So go Cocoa for that. All right, sorry. Now, how does the open-boundary school alleviate? Basically, this going to an open-boundary concept allows not only the people who are in those boundaries to come in, but it allows more people to come in to fill the school. It will allow more access instead of less. The conception that they came up with was to create as least amount of barriers as possible for the new school, and by doing, by creating a hard boundary, which we may have to go to eventually, it actually restricts the access to certain schools from other areas, if that makes sense to you. So the open-boundary concept is done so that it limits, it does not limit access to the new school. And free and willing, if you wanted to stay afterwards and sit down, if I'm not addressing these correctly. The $30 fee is actually part of the pot of money that goes towards our, our, what is it? What's the name of Ms. Archer's programs?
Equity and Choice.
Yeah, Equity and Choice program, and there's an entire breakdown, and I can get that if you needed me to, to show, but it's not, it's not like a massive amount of money to fund some kind of great thing. I think that if we had 300 kids go, it's like $9,000 or something like that.
We also have to pay fees for the processing of those applications, which comes out of those dollars. So it's part of the way that our ELO and EPO application process is handled. It's done through a platform online, and we have to pay for that access in the process that tracks those ELOs and EPOs. So a large portion of that $30 fee goes towards supporting that.
Yes, and then, so thank you for that. The breakdown is the cost for that program. Similar to Meadow Lane. It was a great concept. Somebody actually sent me an email on that before. The problem is Meadow Lane is right next to each other, right? So a parent that drops off at one can just go to the next. The problem here is, is that you're going to have elementary schools where a parent may have to go through two car loops. And if you've ever been to car loops in VR, it's literally like half an hour, 45 minutes. So we would create an issue there. I do know that staff looked at that, but, and just so you got, everybody knows Meadow Lane, that where, you know, pre-K through, what is it, third and then?
Kindergarten to second.
Right. But they're right next to each other. This doesn't warrant that. It's too far apart, and it creates a strain on the parents. So for that was, and then you said something about any overcrowding priority. What was that?
Would there be a priority on the Quest mandatory students?
I don't think, Dr. Mullins, if you can correct me, but there's not going to be a person from those schools that has refused, correct? I mean, there's nothing on there that says that any of those, nothing that has been presented up till now shows any barrier for those individuals that are in those schools as we speak. I don't think that there's actually any barrier out there created that is going to inhibit anybody from coming in, but especially from those schools, if that helps you. Okay. I'm almost done. Ms. Green, do you, I wanted to make sure, the 25% that voted, that was awesome, right? That is the entire employee group, not just, you don't have to come up, please don't come up. You can just go thumbs up or thumbs down. That's the entire employee group, right? Not just the ones that are in the union.
The entire 10-10 employees.
Right. Thank you. And then the other, the one thing that I was going to do is ask you officially from the dais, can I get 10-10's charter and our contract with them in a copy? Is that possible?
The 10-10 contract is online.
I know. Their charter, I needed to get their charter, too. Do we, should I ask them for that? How do we do that? Is that something that is given to us? I should make an official ask through one of their employees? It's just something that I've always wondered, so.
I like what we're doing. That would be fair, but I'll ask them when they're back to us.
Okay. Perfect. And then, Ms. West, I think we're going to deal with your, did she leave?
Yes.
Okay.
She had to catch the bat. Can I go next?
Yep, go. Are you going to hit substitutes? Okay, go.
Go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
So while you're on the spot, Dr. Green, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you and your team for the work you did, working through the 10-10 negotiation process, and thank you for coming up with a great plan with them and collaborating to get that done. And thank you for coming up with a great plan with them and collaborating to get that done. So, it's a thankless job some days, I know, so thank you. Ms. West was not able to stay, but hopefully she'll go back and watch the end of our meeting. But I know that we're going to be talking about the substitute issue again very soon. It's not, you know, it's not something we can take up care of between board meetings, because it's a process that has to be worked, and I know Dr. Theddy's working on that, and they just, we're looking through the results of the survey, right, Dr. Theddy? That the subs we're sending back in to look at what is, what are the best options. So I am on top of that too, and I know we're all looking forward to seeing what we can do, not only to, to keep our subs, but how do we recruit new ones. But I also wanted to talk to Alan Tracy and just say, add, in addition to what Mr. Susan said, thank you for that brief little snippet you said, how you want to work with our students and broadcasting, because part of the great thing that we can do, one of the great things we can do for our students in our career and technology programs is give them real world experience. And so I thank you that as you're starting your business, that you're wanting to give back in that way. And I hope that you will talk to Ms. Schultz about how you can get involved in our schools, because, you know, we'd love to see people who are doing the job and who have been doing it for a while come in and be mentors and give our students a glimpse at what it really looks like, so looking forward to that.
Great point, Ms. Campbell, and I would even say we have, even outside of our CTE programs, we have some programs in our high schools where our, you know, our yearbook and media teams and that sort of thing, that, that could certainly, I think, be a great partnership there. And so, thank you for, for your continued support of the schools. Absolutely, love it, thank you. Any other board members wish to comment? I didn't mean to jump in there before you all. Ms. Campbell, you have more?
Mr. Susan did such a good job on the new elementary school, but I just wanted to add to, I think that your first question was, how does it alleviate, the open boundary, alleviate overcrowding at those two particular schools? And I think the idea behind it was that by doing, or part of the idea behind it was that by doing open boundaries and an ELO or education location option, but not providing, with those you don't provide transportation, is that the most likely people to attend that school will be the ones coming from the closest surrounding area, which would be Quest and Manatee. So it's very unlikely for someone down my way from Turner or Meadow Lane to sign up to go to the new elementary school when they have to hop in the car and get on the highway for 20, 30 minutes. So it's most likely to do that. And then, you know, as we go through, you know, I am interested to see, you know, and I think this is part of the idea that Ms. Hahn can give me a shake head, is that over the next couple of years, we see, where is, where's everyone coming from? And once we see where everyone's coming from, then it will be easier to draw those boundaries and say, okay, the majority of the students who are signing up to go to this new elementary school are coming from this area. If we, when it's time to draw the line, here's where we want to draw the line that makes the most sense. So hopefully that explains a little more of the thought process.
Well, that's cer, right now, that's certainly their option to stay.
I think your concerns about will people go to the new elementary school from Quest and relieve both Quest and Manatee also needs to be addressed in that the charter school across the street just expanded. So when they open next year, they're gonna have almost twice the student stations that they had. And Pinecrest will also be opening. So I think that you're gonna see a drop in those. I do know that a lot of the Quest parents, because I frequent the school a lot and I talk to them, have expressed to me that they plan on staying at Quest. I don't know if the $30 fee is one that I would look at as a barrier as an individual. We tried to look at erasing that $30 to try to find out. But the problem is, is that currently, the way our ELO process is, is that's part of it. And if we pull it just for this specific one, then all of a sudden, every single person across the county. So we tried to actually look at a way to go around that ELO process and do it another way, but there's just not for the open concept. So I do want to tell you that staff worked really hard as far as trying to find an option there, but was unsuccessful so far. But I do agree with you in the fact that it's a mini barrier, but I don't know if, you know what I mean? Sure, I understand.
And just to clarify, the impact fees, the impact fees don't just come from the people who live around that area. That those impact fees came from everybody who lives in the south end of the county. So even the people in Palm Bay who are paying impact fees, it's going to the Vieira Elementary School, which they will likely never step foot in. So, it's not just the local area people. So I understand the bitterness, but I just want to make sure that's clarified. It's not just Vieira people paying for that school, we're all paying for it. Okay. So go, go forth and spread the truth, thank you.
The Vieira, the impact fees go all the way from, right around Rockledge, all the way south. And, to that point, also, the impact fees and the debt that we're carrying currently was because of the expansion and construction through all schools, all the way from Heritage to Bayside to the new elementary schools. So, there's $37 million in debt, where a portion of that is because of expansion of construction, because each one of those high schools cost us like 85 million to make. So when they were talking about that their impact fees are the ones that built it, yeah, a little bit. But she, Ms. Campbell is 100% correct in that it's a small fraction of actually what went in to build that school. So, thank you.
Ms. Campbell and Mr. Susan, you're done?
No.
All right. Any other board members wish to respond to any of the public comments this evening? Ms. West is in my area, and I will follow up with her in the event that she doesn't see the meeting tonight. And we do have that down, we do not have that down as a discussion point on the agenda. So I will go ahead and address it now, just so we don't get distracted. There was at one point a request, I think, from Mr. Susan to have some discussion around the substitute issue on tonight's agenda. I wanted to let you all know, I know Dr. Theddy has been working hard on that plan, and we certainly continue to keep that a focus. I had asked Dr. Mullins to give us the opportunity at our upcoming offsite to have some discussion, really kind of debriefing our substitute experiences. Because I feel like through my day of substituting, I gained some insight that would potentially give us ideas of things that were the experience this way or that way, might have an impact on our substitutes' desire to return as well. And so I wanted to have an opportunity for us all to have a discussion and kind of debrief that experience and see what ideas we could come up with, to also be considered in our plan going forward. So, the reason that plan, one of the reasons that plan is not coming to us right now is because I did ask for that leeway for us to have that discussion. So, I will take ownership of that, but know that it is certainly still a priority for all of us. So we are absolutely working on it. Anyone else want to? Yes, Mr. Susan.
So I, I did ask, and the, and the main concern was that we were gonna have paralysis by analysis, where we just continue to keep talking about what we're gonna do for the substitutes and not actually do it, because there were some things that we could just deploy right now that would be good. And I do, I do think that you are 100% right in that we should take it some time and look at this at our meeting, and then with all due intention, move, right? And I do want to applaud Dr. Theddy for sending out the emails so that we could get some actual data back. I actually have the biggest lobbyist for the substitutes that lives across the street and babysits my kid. So she instantly, as soon as she got it, came over and said, "I got this email, blah, blah, blah," you know what I mean? So, thank you for that, and I think that we're on a good path moving forward. And I hope soon that Ms. West will not have to show us any more pictures of her gas needle, and that we can actually get this taken care of, so thank you.
Absolutely. All right, that I believe moves us into the consent agenda, Dr. Mullins.
There are 24 agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any items? I will then entertain a motion to accept the consent items, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Ms. Campbell, seconded by, did you say second?
I didn't get it out, moved to approve, you weren't done yet.
Moved by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Duskovich, is there any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. We don't need a break, do we?
Nope.
All right, we will then move on to the action agenda, Dr. Mullins.
Ms. Belfort, there are a total of five action items on this evening's agenda. The first one is on procurement solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich, any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes 5-0, Dr. Mullins.
Next is Department School Initiated Agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougall, any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes 5-0, Dr. Mullins.
Item G36 is on school improvement plans.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich, any discussion?
Just wanted to just pause for just a moment and recognize that while this is a very quick moment, and we're about to prove that these school improvement plans, which there's so many of them that we can't even attach them all here, you gotta follow the website, these school improvement plans take a lot of work by our administrators and teacher teams and all of our departments to go through. And I just want to pause and just be thankful for the work that goes into all of these, developing the plans, and then in addition to that, implementing them through the year and doing what it takes to, you know, come to the end of the year. And so, thank you to all our administrators and our teacher teams who work so hard in all our departments, and leading and learning for going through every single one, and making sure that they're all where they need to be. And it's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work, and I will say that I feel like it is much more productive work now than it was five years ago.
Yes.
When I came on the board, and even prior to that, when I served on the SAC committee and worked through the school improvement plan with the team. So, I am, I am very thankful for the direction it has gone. It's, it's rich in data and really focusing on the right things, so. Kudos to all that made that happen.
When I got elected, I met with my principals, and the first thing I said was, "I reviewed your school improvement plans." And they looked at me like I had warheads.
We still look at you that way sometimes, Mr. Susan, but.
No, but the bottom, the bottom line is, is that these are amazing, and the tool is being used.
Yes.
Kudos, good job.
Yes, much better. Any additional discussion on school improvement plans? Please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
Item G37 is for you to authorize a superintendent to advertise for a public hearing for the 2019-2020 Student Progression Plan.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell, any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0, Dr. Mullins.
The last action item on this evening's agenda will have two parts. The first is authorize a superintendent to advertise for a public hearing on the attendance boundary changes for the school year 2020-2021 on January 28, 2020.
What are the wishes of the board? Authorize the superintendent to move forward with the advertising for the public hearing?
Second.
Moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Mr. Susan, any discussion?
Just real quick.
Yes.
The only, one of the main issues that we want to do is, is as we move forward and as we start this discussion, is to reduce any barriers that exist between us and getting those, that school filled. One of those barriers is the time between when the last application for an ELO and when the school opens. So I would love to get support to look at, and I talked to Dr. Mullins, and he agreed, at somehow creating a process that eliminates that barrier of time. Not the barrier of process, but the barrier of time, so that if a family moves in, goes up to Quest in the first two days, and they look at it and they're like, whoa, this is too much, that there's still an opportunity for that family to apply and go to the new elementary school, because that's when a lot of that beginning of the year grind occurs, so that's all.
Would that be up to a certain amount? Because I know we're looking at only filling that school up to a certain percentage to start off with, unless they live in the,
I think.
Unless they live in the zone, what do we call it, Zone A?
I would, I would just say, if we could reduce the barrier of time is the key.
Mr. Susan mentioned that earlier this afternoon, and I certainly suggest that I take it to staff and have them look at it. Ms. Archer understands the whole ELO process much better than, than I do, so we'll take a look at it and see if there's an opportunity there.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Mr. Susan, anything else on this?
Nope.
All right, then I have a motion and a second, I will call for a vote. And the motion passes 5-0, Dr. Mullins.
The second recommendation on this item is to approve the following considerations. The new Vieira Elementary School will open with no boundary with the exception of Area A. All students would apply under the ELO process, that includes a $30 fee and no transportation. The lottery for attending the new Vieira Elementary School will give priority to students currently attending Quest and Manatee in order to relieve overcrowding at these schools. Grant consideration, excuse me, grant special consideration for any current student within the new Vieira, Vieira Area Elementary School, Area A, which affects three families and five students to continue to attend Quest Elementary until they complete elementary school under an ELO process that includes a $30 fee and no transportation. These students would not be charged the ELO fee to attend the new Vieira Elementary School. Grant special consideration for rising sixth graders affected by the Seapark, Pinewood MIMS, and Imperial Estates boundary changes may remain at their current school under an ELO process with a $30 fee and no transportation.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell, any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes 5-0. Does any board member have anything further to discuss or report? Mr. Susan.
I just want to let you guys know that I requested the data from Cigna for both our MRIs, our outpatient surgeries, and our pharmacy. They're in the process of putting that together. I also sent it to Cigna to, so that they knew. One of the issues we had in 2017 was we made the request, and then Cigna said they'd sent it over. We, they didn't get the, we got the data, and it wasn't exactly what we needed, so we had to keep going back and forth. So I hope that they're able to streamline that process. I also asked for Aon's and Cigna's contracts. You guys may have seen that email. What that did was, they sent that email to me, and they said there's a redacted version, but we can go to the actual purchasing and review. So I was gonna go through that. And part of that process is so that we can, again, like we always do, look for ways to save our insurance. It's good, we're good on that one? All right, the next one is, is that we always, I, over the, over the break that we had, there was a situation on CNN where some person got on the internet and was able to utilize a camera in somebody's bedroom. And because of that, every one of my PTOs almost gave me a call and asked about what we can do to help educate their people on, my PTOs and my schools, on the internet predators. Apparently, there's a significant amount in this county that are utilizing social media to try to use, be a predator on our kids. And I was the first person to grab my daughter's phone and start looking on it, and she looks at YouTube sometimes. And there's other ways to do that. I think we need some education on that, so I asked the security team to maybe possibly bring back some kind of a recommendation on how we can do that. Maybe like a PTO night where they just come in and do some kind of education that's already set. And then also, we're always hearing about our trades being, not many people in the communities around our trades are understanding of what we have inside of our schools. So, I talked to Dr. Mullins a while ago, when he got brought on, that I would like to go to the schools and do kind of a, hey, this is what we have, and invite the people to kind of take a look, that are major people within the community within a five or 10 mile radius, along with inviting the people that are specific to that job. So if there's an aviation program at O'Gally, we invite all the companies that are at the Melbourne Airport. Melbourne Airport, because I sit on the Economic Development Council Board, and many of the aviation companies have heard so much about it, but never actually come for a tour, and we've given some opportunities. But there's some great other programs, construction programs, maritime programs at Rockledge, all of them that need a little bit of help when it comes to funding and sponsorships and speaking and stuff like that, so I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm gonna meet with Dr. Mullins and try to put together in my district some of those industries to come on certain days sometime in like March or February or something, that's all.
Create information, Mr. Susan, um, Ms. Campbell?
I just, um, I know that there have been some cybersecurity presentations, um, that our security department's on, but can I encourage you also to contact Ms. Gleason, Jenny Gleason, because I think it would be good, um, for one of our parent, um, what do they call them? Parent university or parent leadership team, that they bring a leadership from every, uh, parent leader from every school to come and do a presentation, maybe that would be a good topic to add to one of her monthly meetings with parents.
Sure, I'm gonna have pre-K after everybody's done talking, that's all.
Ms. McDougal.
I met with a, um, women's group over the weekend, and they had two things that they talked about that they would like, I was thinking about what Ms. Campbell said about, what can we do for girls, um, how the boys have the ties and the mentors, and there were two things that this group brought up. One was called the Matilda Comp, uh, complex, about how girls are told, "No, you're not smart in math, no, don't go into science," and the other is the imposter, um, I guess it's the Matilda Syndrome and the imposter complex, where girls take it more, um, "Oh my goodness, I didn't do it right, I'm not good enough," and to really have some maybe speakers come and talk about that to girls, to incorporate them that they are good enough, that they have the ability. There's many women that don't get accolades for all, they were behind the scenes in many of our famous inventions, that the men got the credit and not the women, so that's something to think about, to have some guest speakers and, and Ms. Campbell, if I can work with you on that, if you're interested, so.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Mr. Susan, you said you had additional?
Yeah, I just, kind of an update on the pre-K, since we've been pushing through and we're doing different stuff. I do wanna tell you that, um, first off, that there are, there is some legislation moving. I don't think it's specific to what it needs. I did wanna tell you that I've contacted our local legislators, they are all aware of what this is, there is leadership across the state of Florida that is aware of what it is, um, but I truly believe that we're at a point where a lot of our pre-K teachers are gonna jump ship and leave the pre-K profession and jump in the kindergarten, first, second, third, right in there, because they're actually looking at a significant loss in pay. And I started looking at it, and if I'm a pre-K teacher that was, you know, highly effective over the last four years, that's like $10,000 in best and brightest that you didn't receive, right? Then on top of that, if I had a loan that I was supposed to get forgiveness for, you can't do that, and then I'm retired early, but what's crazy is not only by shortening the, the window of opportunity to retire, they also, the retirement is built upon what you received earlier in your, your pay. So the, so the long-term effect of having a pre-K teacher sitting in pre-K that's not being significantly looked at, so I didn't know the, I didn't take a look at the cost of, of what it is actually costing them, so I did wanna just kind of update you on that. I also, um, there are other counties that have found a way to take those pre-K teachers that would have qualified for best and brightest, and they found a way to pay them, you know, through other ways and everything else. So I was gonna ask if there was a way that we could just, it's not that I'm proposing it or anything like that, but what I'm trying to make an argument is, when we go to Tallahassee and we speak in front of committee, I would like the ability to say that my teachers in pre-K would have qualified this many people, and this is how much money we were taking out of our county because they weren't part of the best and brightest, does that make sense to you? So I was gonna send an email, if anybody has any objections, just to request, hey, in the event that they were included, which ones actually would have received it? Because you're talking about a group of people that had to be highly effective or effective, be a part of only those schools that would have received it, right? So it's not like all pre-K teachers, it's probably not that many, it's probably a smaller amount, that's all. So, Dr. Mullins, is that okay if I send that email to you to get those numbers? All right. Sorry, I just keep pounding away at pre-K, um, and I think that's it.
I think that is a, uh, a noble effort, Mr. Susan, as you know, we've had multiple conversations around that through the, the Legislative Committee with FSBA. I don't know if you got a chance to watch the, uh, committee meetings last week?
No.
But, uh, there was some pretty significant discussion around those individuals currently excluded from the governor's plan. So let me say upfront that we have strong indication that what we have seen as far as the governor's plan is probably not going to be anywhere near what we end up with at the end of the day when session closes, uh, for, for various reasons and, and motivations. However, what has been put forward and what was discussed in those committees was the exclusion of media specialists, social workers, guidance counselors, pre-K teachers, all of those individuals. There actually is a specific increase in the BSA for pre-K this year of, I believe, $8.4 million. There's a four, I wanna say it's $4.2 million increase in, um, pre-K funding for an anticipated increase, I think it was about 1,500 students, um, but there is an actual increase in the BSA, which they very clearly stated would be an opportunity to increase salaries for pre-K teachers with that increase. I share that, and, once again, not to say that's what we're going to end up with at the end of the day, um, but that is very much their intention of the increase in the BSA for, for pre-K specifically, um, which I think is good and bad, right? So they've recognized that if we truly want to have a world-class education system in Florida, we're going to have to address early childhood education. We've been told by the lobbyists for probably six months to a year that we shouldn't hold our breath on anything specific to pre-K because we know that the big focus this year is gonna be on K-12 teachers, and to be able to fund both is probably difficult. But it does look as though they're, they're doing their best to kind of work that in, but even with that, it doesn't address the other issues, the, the difference in retirement, the, uh, you know, and eligibility for all of these different things, so, uh, I applaud you and commend you, and thank you for all of the work that you're doing with that committee to keep that, uh, top of mind, and, um, if there are opportunities for us to have those conversations with, with our legislators, I think we need to keep doing it, so thank you.
I did just wanna say that it's, the majority, 95% of it, is being driven by them. I just kinda helped them and steer them and make phone calls and that stuff, so all the credit goes to them, and I did wanna applaud all the way from Dr. Mullins to Pam to every single school board member on here, that you guys are all in unison in supporting pre-K teachers in this effort. I wanted to say that because sometimes I'm out there and I hear, "Oh, the board this, the board that," no, this board, I have never heard a negative comment at all towards not supporting it, and I wanted to thank every one of you for what you're doing into the, into the event that we did fund them when the state said we shouldn't have. We, this, you guys have been amazing, so thank you for that support. They do, they thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments from any board members? Dr. Mullins, do you have a superintendent's report that you would like to share? All right, there being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.
Good job.